I guess, yeah, I guess I'll call this, what is it, special work session, budget work session of the city council. January 2. Start with roll call.
I got it.
Good. All work. Go ahead, Adam, you got the floor.
We will jump in, just want to thank everyone for being here. I know work sessions haven't always happened here. This will be a little bit of trial and error, so get a little bit of your feedback. What's been helpful, what isn't, you need more information here, is this too much information, so. It's kind of now, it's a little bit of trial and error. Hey. Kind of to start us off. It's only about half of what's in our budget, what I'm going through today, so no library, no public works. Or in the capital projects we discussed tonight, hopefully that'll be in maybe a second, so whether Roger and I will discuss if we think it should be regular meeting or another work session. We'll kind of discuss after feedback tonight what we want to do. Like I say, this is not exactly what I had intended when I started here, nor is this the reason why you guys like are running for council, but. My message to the public will kind of be same and the similar with. We only received on the general fund side basically a $3 million valuation increase, which equates to about $18,000 increase. If you add, then you take away the 10,000, we get for 90,000 a year, but it's going down 10,000 every year, the backfill. You add inflation on top of that, you add that we are struggling on the fire department side to get volunteers. And we need to consider increases in on-call time or whatnot, we at least need the budget for it. But include kind of that and inflation, we're really looking at it at a year where we're getting cut basically about 18% less workable cash that we've. We've got to work with. That's just kind of general world before we start. Pretty much everything in here. Feel free to jump up. Hit around me if you need to, the way I see it, outside of staffing, whatever's in here. It's going to be the authority of staff to implement, we'll talk a little bit more about equipment when those department heads speak. Everything except for salaries, we'll talk a little bit more. But the difference between city administrator and manager, I do not have the authority to hire, fire, set wages, council does. So in this budget, I'm just asking for budget, not that everyone is getting a 4% increase, so. When performance comes due, we'll have those conversations later on, but if there is something that you guys disagree with or is controversial, we'll mark it. And we'll move it till later time, I don't want to get bogged down on a, on something and we can readdress it after we think things through. I had to deal with that with some of the departments where something was controversial. You know, rather than beating it down for two hours, we regrouped at a different day and when we got together, it only took us five minutes to discuss it and we thought about it, so. Any questions on that? I'll jump into. I guess the bird's eye view, just to kind of remind you. When I go through a fund, I'm just going to re-show you this, just so you're not looking at 30 of them, but that's the very big snapshot. That beginning on the left is our projected balance, assuming we spend every dollar this year. In our current budget and assuming we get every single dollar that we expect to get this fiscal year. So the general fund is 372,000, that's with all those assumptions, it's not a perfect science at this point. Hopefully in the next year or two, we'll be able to be more exact. And then the, as you move closer to the right, the bigger items I want you to look at is that to and from balance. Generally. There's some transfers in and outs, whether we're paying for a project, whether we're doing reserve equipment, whether we're, we're getting a grant or something like that. What I want you to look at is that to and from balance, not necessarily always revenues versus expenses. There's certain tricks that are going on, the ones that I highlighted in red were. We're spending down those funds or it's something that I want you to pay attention to. I do want to point this out, this. Right in here and I'll kind of show it up on the screen too, I know we had a couple of staff members, but. Is this kind of area I do want to kind of point out as a point of emphasis. Each month you guys see how much is in our bank account, but that doesn't always tell you the story of what's going on in each fund and which ones are healthy, which ones are not. And so, you know, I have my concerns about a couple of funds, but when you look at 115,000 positive number, you're never going to see what's going on just by looking at how much is in the bank. So just kind of pointing that out. For the assumptions that we'll go over a little bit later, 4% increase in full-time wages, 20% increase in health insurance. Inflation's hitting fuel, vehicles, travel a little bit harder. I've seen upwards to 43%, I just kind of went with 25% in those assumptions. We'll talk a little bit more about tax levy. As we get a little bit closer. I'm going to show you, go backwards a little bit, show you the peer communities. It's not an exact science, there's a Iowa State does a community indicators program where they compare us to other communities, that's where I got these. These towns from, and then I included some competing towns, Iowa City, Correville. Tipton wasn't in there, but typically if it's a community close to an interstate next to a larger city, we're all grouped together in this. What's called a peer group, and so I just added a few others that I thought that were important. Where we're competing with. As we get further into more comparisons and salaries, I'll kind of ask you guys for feedback on those towns, but just for the sake of time, I wanted to give you guys something. In terms of where we're sitting at, tax levy wise. Median town, I did median, so these ones that are eight or 20 aren't throwing us off, there needs to be, what are most towns? So median, and the median's about 1339. Tax rate for 1,000 assessed value, right now we're at 1309. If we do a couple of the suggestions I have, which will talk a little bit further, it would be 1360. I can work a little bit on the employee benefit side. A little bit stronger on the. Town hall, emergency management commission, some of those things are increasing regardless. So we would go above the median if we did every single change in here, so I'll kind of seek your guys' feedback when we get into employee benefits. Next. Next meeting, just to give you an idea, that 50 cent increase is about a $50 increase a year for a home at $200,000. Just to give you a scale of what it, what it looks like. General fund as presented, I'll go a little bit more into detail, I got it to be balanced, but I'm still not feeling great. Two to three years down the road. I did separate a bunch of funds which the city can levy for for additional revenue, so like your town hall, I want that separated, I don't want the general fund subsidizing it. Because we're going to need to upgrade its roof or whatnot, 40,000 is not very much money to have. Need to do something with it. Creates new reserve accounts for all departments and Heritage Square Park, I chose that because there was a lot of discussion, CDG, we can decide to something different. If you want it for hotel motel set aside, but I just thought that's a little bit more for your money, at least we can try and plan something with that. We talked about in the interview, with my interviews, housing rehab programs or facade programs or. Any type of extra stuff like that, this budget, we're not anywhere near close to addressing those issues, so none of those things are, are addressed here. Just a couple more tidbits. Does require a number of matching funds before certain rec programs or library programs can be utilized. It does cut one part-time position and eliminates some video recordings, what I mean by that is. For board of adjustment, city council. Those are final decisions, we probably need to pay the staff or, a couple of examples, we have animal control commission that meets every month. That costs the city 50 to 75 dollars in wages for those meetings. We could probably train a staff member to just, or, or a chair to just record it. You know, those aren't final decisions that are made, if it's a final decision, definitely needs to be recorded, there needs to be transparency. But when you add up the cost, the deal is, it's one of the things to kind of look into. That's from some projects and other operational expenses, that's from some equipment set aside as. At the current moment, it does maintain current full-time staff, but I would like to review where we're at in six months. Just to see where we're at in terms of revenues coming in, is inflation, it's hard, fitness is harder than you think, I'm not entirely sold that. I haven't been here long enough, I think, to make that decision, but I also have kind of made it clear to staff that this year and the next year are probably going to be a challenge. Hotel motel, quick highlight, this is a trick to lower some of our expenses on the general funds, be transparent here. If we move CDG to 50% of hotel motel tax, it will take that 10,000 off our general fund rule. Assuming we get 20,000, we would at least fund the 10,000. If the new hotel motel comes in, then their revenue will go up as well as the city's, so it would create an incentive for CDG. To encourage tourism, to encourage people to stay in our hotels. So I'm, I'm hoping if Jack Kuyt's hotel comes in. There'd be an incentive both ways to promote, to promote those items. 25% would go in the savings and 25% would go in the Heritage Square Civic Center or Town Hall. I do have a raise of about 10,000 in taxes, currently we are subsidizing town hall by about 10,000. So it stops that budget deficit through the small surplus of 3,000 that would be used to fund major structural areas, again, 3,000 a year is not very much, but it's a place to start.
You say town hall maintenance.
Correct.
They see.
Correct, all, all that stuff, and we'd still get revenue from renting out the facility.
That's a question I have though, is where does that revenue go? I mean, does it go into the. Does it go into the town hall or is it going to parking recs budget or?
It goes strictly, the way I've got it proposed, it's strictly town hall. So what, what I mean by that is, there may be a cost share, say there's some utility issues. Then yes, we would share between parks and rec and town halls, parks and rec isn't in there 24/7, however, they use the facility, some of that needs to come out of the budget. But it's supposed to be a separate line item. Plus whatever part maybe we have.
Do you know where it's been going? In the past?
I can check, but I did, when I did ask Heidi, it's, it's some sort of split, I don't know the percentage when they ask. Right now, this fiscal year, since we're at a deficit in that account, it's either coming out of its reserves or it's coming out of general. So. What that means is we're either making our reserves go down for town hall or we're subsidizing. It through our general, $8 of taxes.
So what we collect in fees. Is that going to the general fund then, or is that going?
It's supposed to go into a separate account for the town.
Okay.
I did separate out funded and non-funded capital projects, I know it's a big discussion point, and I'll tell you why they're that way. Just because I need to know how much we're asking for in the tax levy this year. I'm confident we've got, obviously you know we got Cyril Abou, I did hear word today, we did get that $700,000 grant, so. Then I've got a couple of things in there, if it goes as high as 1 billion, I don't know if it'll go that high, but. I've got some ideas to at least fund the Woxie Creek widely. The other three, we got to have discussions about tonight in terms of what we're looking at in terms of either tax raises or. Raises in water rates. What we'll talk about next meeting is toward liability, employee benefits, local office and sales tax. Road use tax in your business utility accounts, your water sewer. Storm sewer. Then I jump into reserve requirements and just get your guys' thoughts. I've got for reserve requirements, what I'm doing is we'll, we'll pass some sort of policy that I prefer some of that discussion. I'm just going off what I've used in previous deployments, doesn't mean it's the best, I'm just being transparent with that. I've got 25% of annual receipts for the general fund. For our business and enterprise funds, we'll have to keep those because we're on those SRF loans, that's a requirement. The 50% operating expenses plus 100% debts. Or benefits. Again, I don't know what the best, best plan of that is, I just got 50% of expenses. Same with liability, special funds, this one's assertive too, not telling you that this is the best ideal too, that's just what I've used in the past. And that's 100% of one-year receipts for hotel motel. Home block and sales tax, not saying that's perfect, that's just what I've used in the past. Really, this is your guys' policy more than it is mine. I guess how assertive you want us to be. Reserve. Over here is kind of the goal, if it's in red, we're behind. We're in black, we're, we're above those goals. So to kind of open up discussions, I know in the past couple of years, there's been discussions about three or six months operating. You guys have a preference or an issue, if we do three months or six months. Matter.
Free and build up to six of, I mean, years. You can't do six months right away, there's no way. Build up to it.
Why don't we make, why don't we make that a. Four-year plan or whatever, we start with three and the next year we do four and then five. Give us up to six.
We know what that dollar amount would be, yeah, what would that mean in dollars, I guess.
What'll be harder though, since we're a growing community, the more our. Tax revenue goes up, the higher our savings would have to be to get those, so I don't know if it would take us four, five, six years, but we could do something. That would help us in six.
What was our reserve this year? Was there one?
I don't know, that's, that's my question to you guys, because I don't have a policy in place that says it needs to be three months or six months.
We set a capital reserve fund in this current budget. I thought it was like over 13,000.
I thought it was 30,000. That was capital reserve for, that was down at the bottom of our budget, that was just as our debt levy. Maintain the same, yeah. That was, it was different.
That's your capital project or your capital service levy.
Same with the cap, yeah.
And I'm not, we could probably have one for that fund too, but I think we're at wages.
Six months. Six months, what is three months of reserve?
He said six months would be 1.1 billion, so three months would be 500,000 dollars.
Three a month, it's like 585,000. It's not a $600,000 budget. Well, if we're in 81, you're short 101, so double that would be six months. So even that, $600,000 is three months.
Where we're at right now, Adam, are we realistic that we can really increase our general fund?
I don't think we can do honestly six months for a while.
I think three months is better than we've probably had for. Long time, I mean, two or three years ago, we couldn't even keep under the borrowing pressure. We were, you know, 50% above what.
We have. Well, like I said, we have a lot of capital improvement projects that we want to do that we want to use tip money and we can't, we can't increase our general fund, how can we do those with tip? So. Come out, we need to increase that general fund. Whether we. With some of these other expenses. Some of the stuff that we're doing into other budgets.
Comfortable with six months, is that more of a realistic, I mean, we're already there.
The only reason why we're there right now is we never did anything with the money, we just let, said that. That sewer fund. Might almost be the same way because we. Raised a portion of the sewer rates that were supposed to go into a, be saved for, to help construct. So it may not, well, obviously, once we start spending money for the sewer anyway, that. Right, that happened.
And that was to pay engineering.
So we, until we get the estimated cost of that sewer plant, we have no idea whether that's going to, we're, we're growing that fast enough or not. Hopefully with all the new housing coming on. Really. That cost, that revenue. You able to get an answer on the local option?
So it's funded by a portion of your county, your population in your county. Plus a portion of your property values. So do we. Are we getting the full value of what's sold in West Orange now? But you have one of the higher population. But it does get spread out. They don't, the state doesn't track. They track sales tax by the county level, not by the individual. City, because if you're going by postal code, there's people that live outside of city limits with the West Branch postal. And I'm not sure if I can dig into more of the state, why they chose that way, my guess is it takes a lot of admin to break down where it's coming from. And that's probably one of the things of cutting down on state expenses, well, is it really worth. The state having 100 more employees if they're, you know, calculating for all.
So it didn't sound like there's any way we could. Get some kind of a number to it, saying this is. Well, the audit would only happen in a couple of years now, we wanted to go to that route, but. With our growth and as much as we're growing, we've already determined that every house is building here, but good chunk of the sale, home block and tax that's coming. Right here, it's not going to any of these other communities that we're not getting, that they're getting, because we're growing.
We're getting shorter.
Very.
Yeah.
And there's no formula for us to. To determine, to apparently not, no, no.
That's just something we advocate for and I'm not, obviously, probably won't get it, but when you talk to our state representative, that's one thing you can pick on their brains about is. It'd be nice if sales tax that's generated in West Orange from the state.
Alright, so last thing on that, the local option fund, for instance, 252,000. That's an amount, that's a goal.
Correct.
For an annual. That's just a fund, money that. Sit there on paper as a reserve.
For emergencies, so if they were hit a budget year like this and we had a little bit extra spending, you know, be easier to use.
But that local option fund can only be used to pay debt or parks. Right, it's one thing.
Be used for park improvements, I'll double check right after. Not necessarily a debt, pardon.
That's, that's set by the community, right? That's not, is there. And that was set apparently by council at some point.
It was voted on. It's one of the two or three questions.
That during the time.
So soon, somebody just was talking around.
Yeah, yeah, a couple of years.
Yeah, local option sales tax, there's no tie from the state saying this is how you have to spend it, like hotel motel, 50% has to go to tourism or community attraction. No ties, it's just based on, you know, sometimes it's what the local officials or staff that would get asked.
It's what the referendum said, so it is tied.
Yeah, but that ran, runs out in two years now, in two years was that, I mean, we.
Put it somewhere else.
Well, yeah, but we had planned on that being the way we were going to pay back. The loan for Covey Park and all that other stuff, so did we have an alternative plan for. If, when this was up, was the park loan going to be paid off and we're going to have to renew it?
I don't think so, I think.
You can only go for 10 years, so that's the max.
Because like I remember, like I remember we had a local option sales tax for. Because like I remember, like I remember, we had a local option sales tax for jail. No, was it, was it an air compressor or generator or something? Okay. Yeah. But there was a balance left over when it was all said and done, that we had to figure out what to do with.
We did, and we went to state now to make a few buttons, maybe.
Okay. I need new radios.
So in a couple of years, we need to look back. We need to go, look at a project that we're needing funds for, whether it's days in the park or
we're not, we're not, it'll be another.
What, and what's that, that's generate roughly quarter of a million dollars a year?
Correct.
So we do it for roads.
I mean, it's whatever you guys feel A is best and B what'll pass.
Also, so if you take it out of the parks that, which are just, we're right now, it's going to park to pay for Covey Park. So if we take it out of parks, then what replaces their badge? What replaces that?
Yeah.
That to go to parks, because
Right next year. Well, there was no guarantee it was gonna pass the second go around anyway, though, to pay for parks. So there must, there must have been all, I mean, the payments went down as the loan matured anyway. So maybe they dropped off enough to where it didn't matter.
Probably would be an increase in property taxes based off, you know, if local option sales tax didn't go through, I'd have to double check the referendum, but to move into set aside, I wanna get, I guess, clear direction on what you guys view set aside is, I, I as I put in a scenario that hopefully would help us get to a certain consensus or direction at least. I guess, let's say Public Works has a hundred thousand in savings. They ask for fifty thousand this fiscal year in, in operating expenses for equipment. The vehicle they're trying to purchase is a hundred twenty-five thousand. What gets depleted first? That a hundred thousand in savings, the fifty thousand they ask for? Or do they wait another year until they actually have a hundred twenty-five in reserves?
They have their hundred thousand, they're asking for fifty thousand, so they have a hundred and fifty thousand. And their hundred and twenty-five plus they have twenty-five to put in this year, or yeah, this year's operating expense. That's the way I read this. And that's my interpretation of it.
I'd like to know what, what it is, maybe it could wait another year.
We have instructed, especially Public Works and the police, police department, to do a set aside and plan for big ticket items. So that when they have the money and they need the big ticket item, they can go out and pay for it. Whether or not they're doing that, I don't know. So I guess my theory oughta was, was that we just come up with an amount, whatever it is, whether it's fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand, whatever it is, that they budget every year for equipment. They set that aside until they needed, they need that piece of equipment and then they buy, buy it. We don't have the big, a big enough budget for you to come in here and say, I need a hundred thousand dollars to buy this. So the more you can keep, control your expenses by keeping them the same every year in and year out, then that, that's how you budget. So that's the way I thought it. I mean, that's the way I run my house. I mean, yeah, and if whatever you need takes an extra year before you can pay for it, fine. But when you come to the council at the beginning of the year for your budget, you're not asking for anything more than, than you ever have. I mean, because this is what we pay for equipment for you every year. And it's your job to be the director and man. I mean, now, if you come to a point where you just can't do this anymore, you're gonna have to give me a raise and, and what I'm at, what, what my yearly set aside is, then
Yeah, that's gonna happen.
Right.
Colton, this, this is Heidi. Can you guys hear me?
Chief Horan and Chief Hanna, the last couple of years, ever since we they've been doing a really good job. They've got, you know, when they need their firearms, when they need, I don't know, their high ticket items. And they've got it budgeted through their annual budget, how much they need to set aside in order to make that goal that year.
The fire department does a hell of a job doing it.
So I think the police force is on a seven-year car rotation, seven, eight, eight years, okay. I know the, the next fire truck's gonna be outrageously expensive. What we, they've got reserved, made a cut it.
I don't know how Kevin's gonna be able to budget for fire trucks. It's high, as fast as they are increasing in price. I've never seen. I, I don't know how he's gonna do it. I was amazed that how much that went up, a fire truck went up that fast.
Gonna talk a little bit, staff, we just, I should have done a better job of highlighting, but I did wanna kind of show what, what people would make to, I guess, what the bigger matters, I guess, is the annual, different departments have different hours, like the police have different number of hours they consider full time. But as of right now, there's, there's no way we couldn't afford six percent. My recommend, recommendation is four percent. Likely three and a half percent is probably gonna be the reality. And if you do a salary survey and there's some positions that are below market rate, it'd be nice to do a four percent jump. If you wanna just kind of reiterate, you know, it's just, you're just approving, it's a paid budget for, not necessarily, this is what everyone's gonna get. Yes, my plan is salary surveys, February, March, merit pay system discussions will take place, March and April, get some of those salary surveys back. Employee evaluations will take place at May and June, then council approval of individual raises. But the recommendation for me would take place in June. Yes, I know it's higher than what we've given before, four percent, even though I know we've tried to do COLA. It is, it is higher than we've done before. I kinda wanted to hash out some of that discussion.
What did we give last year?
Wasn't, wasn't?
Two.
One point nine?
It was a two, wasn't it?
That was the COLA. Pretty sure it was COLA. If we can't afford five point nine, then we can't, that's what it is. I guess I wouldn't be opposed to budgeting four percent and that understanding three and a half percent might be across the board. Salary or two, getting the extra half a percent. Seems like a strategy that's workable.
Any other thoughts, or is anybody absolutely against four percent being budgeted?
Well, you're not, you don't like this with you. Instead of getting, if it comes to the point of getting rid of one of our employees, is it totally wrong to ask our employees if they would have a pay freeze for a year and not get a raise to save an employee?
I guess the only thing that I would be concerned about that is, do you see an end game? So do you
That's where we have to do that.
Are you looking into the future and, and, and going to be one hundred percent, a thousand percent sure, not a shadow of a doubt, that you're not going to be in that position again next year?
Well, that's, that's our job, to make sure that we don't do that again.
Well, yes, it is, and, and no, it's not. I mean, me and you don't get to kick in on what we decide COLA's gonna be. We just, we just don't get asked that.
Four, six percent.
Okay, but what if it's eight percent or nine percent next year? Now we're sitting in the same position. What, what if our, what if our benefits go up forty-five percent instead of the twenty percent that went up? You know, so now, now we're, I mean, are, is that likely? No, but it's not a hundred percent positive that we won't be in the same position next year. And it would be completely unfair to ask, to ask people to, or worse yet, have to dump somebody next year after you told these people not to take a raise so you could keep them for a year.
I guess, you're not gonna like the idea.
No, it's a great, I, I mean, I understand.
I, I know exactly where you're coming from.
So do I. But you have to look at it from the employee's position.
They'd rather, they'd rather dump an employee, I'd say, I guess I'm old school, because I'd rather save my fellow employee and have that extra help to get through a week faster than to pad my pocket, and I don't have to, you know, I might have to work harder, but I get more money.
I guess it would be, if it was for a department, if that was for a department, that would be all right. But if the, just for shits and giggles, we're saying that it's gonna be a police officer we cut. Well, that doesn't affect Parks, Parks and Rec. You know, they're not benefiting if there's an extra police officer, you know, nobody works, nobody, that police officer's not helping, no.
You can't do a police officer.
Library.
There you go. Because a police officer, everybody. Police officer. You, you get more rid of that, and then it affects the whole community.
Hope we have the merit system going.
Well.
An idea would be, instead of giving across the board, every employee, could we think about giving each department head certain increase in their wages, they, and they could divvy out how they wanna pay out their, their salary.
That's the goal of the merit pay, that's right.
Right. So, you know, maybe if he, if he wanted to save a little money, maybe it'd be a three percent. But then the department heads would go, listen, this person here is working harder, I'm gonna give him a little bit more than what I've given somebody else, which would be an incentive, which is the whole thing about the merit, the incentive to work harder and get that a little bit of an increase.
In that three years.
In an ideal world.
In an ideal world, you would get a COLA and a merit increase.
Right.
That's an ideal one.
No, that's how COLA works. Technically, if we give them a four percent raise, we're giving them a two percent pay decrease.
Yeah, they're making less.
I haven't gotten a COLA raise and a merit raise in probably twenty years of my employment, no matter where I've worked.
I'm just saying, if you give them a four percent increase, you're giving them
You don't promote yourself good enough, then.
Because if you get, COLA's, you make fifty thousand dollars a year, and it's a six percent COLA, you don't get any money, you are losing
Right.
six percent on the dollar for everything you're making. In an ideal world, that's what, yes, that's what a COLA is. So technically, if you do it right, they should get a COLA because that would keep everybody not punished. And if they did well, then you'd get a merit. So just giving them a four percent is still technically lowering their pay comparatively two percent. So to do four percent, we're still decreasing everybody who works for the city's pay.
So technically, every department head should, in their budget, have an increase of COLA and a merit in their budget for the next year. So that doesn't have to come to the council and say, you know, it's already, yeah, it's already in your budget. You need to figure out how to get that raise to your employees.
Probably, we don't have any stuff with the COLA. So next year, we'll have a COLA. And maybe then we'll have a budget. I don't know, we'll have a department budget.
Time out, guys. Here's the problem, is that, them, that, that money's gotta come out of their budget. Unless you're gonna grow their budget, you're gonna promise that you're gonna grow their budget that much, then, then you're cutting, if it's, say, it's eight percent, that eight percent's coming out of what they're gonna be able to spend on fixing roads and dump trucks and all that other stuff. If you're not gonna backfill it and throw that money in there, so that money's gotta come from somewhere.
Out of the current budget?
No, it can't come out of their current budget, unless you're willing to put the money in there. No, because then you're, you're decreasing the amount of service that we're able to provide.
Decreasing their effectiveness, do their actual.
They need to be more efficient in their
Well, like Public Works is, some of their salaries are streets, some sewers, some is water, some is perpetual. Their, their, their salaries come from so many sources, four, five, or eight.
Right. But then, it's still, it's still not gonna, it's still not gonna matter. You know, water's supposed to pay for water, sewer's supposed to pay for sewer, blah, blah, blah. You're gonna have other departments subsidizing another part of the department because we're not kicking in the money to make it happen. If you think that there's so much money in these departments that we, that, that they can, they can do that and, and not, not decrease our service, then we've been doing this wrong all along.
Well, that's kind of what got us into this position, is we haven't managed money very well over the years. I'm not saying just, this, this has been going on for a long time to get us to this point where we are now. And I'm not saying it's anybody's fault. I just don't think it was presented to us correctly.
I've heard that.
Six percent, so even if it was done correctly, six percent's still pretty big.
That's a big jump.
That's a pretty jump.
It's a big jump.
Regardless if it was done correctly or not.
Yeah, I mean, just think about last year, we, how much arguing we did over one point nine percent. You know, it took us six weeks to come up with one point nine percent.
Okay, let's get back to that. Are, are we agreeing with the three and a half or four percent? Is that agreeable?
At least for direction.
That's, that's our goal here, a little bit of this discussion itself.
I guess here's the only, I'm okay with the four percent. I might be, and maybe this is a discussion we have later, but maybe I'm not okay with the, the breakdown of three and a half percent, likely four percent. If, if our goal is to do a market study and to start implementing the, um, merit, merit increase, to have that in place before we start our raises, then that four percent, do we, do we say, everybody, everybody gets a two and a half percent raise, that's your COLA raise? And then the other one and a half percent is for merit increases? Instead of the three, only a half a percent for merit increases is gonna leave a lot of people Instead of the three, only a half a percent for merit increases is gonna leave a lot of people with nothing.
We can revisit that when we do that, you know, so I can express that council or that staff then. Could be a little bit different on three and a half percent.
It looks like we're agreeable with a four percent.
I'm all right with it if we don't cut it, a person. We cut a person, I'm against it. If we end up having to cut somebody, I'm against it because Goodell came in here two years in a row begging and pleading for an extra person. I need it, I need it, I need it. And we got it to him and now we're gonna possibly take it or the library, we're gonna take it? No, we can't take the library.
You can go so far as to say that about a police officer too. And we didn't even get the fourth one approved and they were already having plans for a fifth one.
Oh, that's not gonna happen. We all know that.
Okay, move on. Thank you. Okay, here comes the awkward conversation.
You're kidding.
I need direction from you guys. I'll do everything I can to not raise water rates and to not raise property taxes. But if we do these projects in the next two to three years, it's gonna happen, whether it's twenty dollars per household or fifty, and that's something Maggie, Dave and I need to figure out. I guess I need to know direction purposes so I can have conversations. What is the maximum you feel I cannot go over at all with discussions with, with our consultants?
So, what is it that you have planned for a property tax increase today?
Right now, today.
Thirteen sixty?
Correct. We can go down a little bit on employee benefits in hopes that, you know, with us having ever staffed, it won't be as high as it is this coming next year. Uh, but for sure, it'd be ideal to be at thirteen twenty-two with the town hall. So that's a twenty-two dollar a year increase, for sure. We did the employee benefits and all that, it would be about fifty. I would say, let me play with the numbers on employee benefit side a little bit more, but for sure, it'll be twenty dollars.
So I guess the other question I had about the benefits, and I know that's gonna be a later discussion, but it does kinda tie into all this.
Yep.
Are we keeping the percentages the same? Or are they going to stomach any of the increase? Or are you putting the whole increase on the general fund?
It stays the same in terms of the seventy thirty. So when it goes up,
It goes up.
More goes from my pocket as well as the city's.
That's all I know.
What's the minimum amount of water that we pay for? Twenty-five hundred gallons?
Two thousand.
Two thousand gallons?
And, and let me tell you about the fights we had over that. Because there's, there's, there's going to be this many little ladies that are gonna say, I use four hundred gallons a month and I have to pay for two thousand gallons. The same ones that said our garbage cans is too big.
Well, that's the thing. That's where I was going, unfortunately. Because we just hit them with garbage increase, we hit them with sewer increase, we're gonna hit them with taxes increase. Now we're gonna hit them with water increase.
Yeah, I was talking about more sewer increase.
Once it's done, we'll get the SRF will tell us what's gonna be the impact.
It may have to go up again.
But they're on a fixed budget. They can't do anything to subsidize, they can't.
Well, they're getting a six percent increase too. Social Security.
So.
That's six percent of their social security. That's not, that's a big whoopie in thousand dollars a month.
So water pays for water, sewer pays for sewer. You're asking, you're asking for the, the water rate increase to, to be there to pay for the, the east side water. Correct. It's not to help for wages and all that crap.
Correct, correct.
Now, that two and a half million dollar project, that includes streets.
I was gonna say that we were gonna do streets.
So we're streets.
So it probably would need to be a mix of.
Yeah.
That's why I just want a dollar amount and we, we'll come up with a proposal that'll be more depth. I just need direction so I can have this conversation.
We just, didn't we just approve, was it just sewer? Did we do sewer and water rates? Sewer only? And then we dropped the, uh, discount for. Yeah.
That was a year ago.
So I guess my, my, I guess my, uh, recommendation would be to do a little market study on what people are getting for a thousand gallons of water. A, B, Matt Goodell needs to come up with a number of what it costs us to produce a thousand gallons of water. And I know he had that at one point, but that was probably a year and a half ago. So.
I did do some talking with Maggie. If we were to do a three million dollar bond and pay it off in fifteen years, if we used in twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-four, we started using the Axiona TIF debt, debt payments. And then we used, new development TIF revenue from cooties if this stuff goes in minus the seventy percent rebate, if we did that with them. That would be a hundred and thirty-five thousand, maybe a little bit more. I did play cautious on the TIF side uh, that we would get every year to make a payment on about a two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar a year payment. So, to pay for a three million dollar bond, we would have to, and it was all property tax, again, all property tax. It would be ninety-one cent increase, which was ninety-eight dollars. Otherwise, we could wait until fiscal year twenty-six, when some of our debt starts to expire. And then we can just roll over our debt into a new project, no raise, no drop in taxes.
Four years.
That's three or four years.
About the time we wanted to do Cedar Johnson Road.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, you're right.
I, I, you know, as much as I hate seeing property taxes go up, they really didn't go up last year.
It went down the year before that.
When I first became mayor, then we went up fifty-five cents, maybe the year before I became mayor, twenty fifteen. Ever since then, it's been dying here, dying there.
I say, we went up nine cents one, my first, our first year and then went back down.
Actually, been really good keeping taxes down.
Like six years. It's been up. Trump has paid some debt, brought it back down.
Yeah.
So in four years, we haven't raised.
Up and down enough.
My experience with raising property taxes is that if you have a set project that you're raising the property taxes for to pay for, people aren't gonna bitch and complain. It's when you just raise them and they don't seem like they're getting anything for their money. Certainly be visibility if we raised them here with Herbert Hoover and, and the water project. Well, as long as those things happen. I mean, you know, if we're gonna raise the taxes forty or fifty cents right now and then we're gonna take away Hoover days and we're gonna do this and we're gonna do that, you're gonna get a lot of pushback because they're not, they're paying more money and they're getting less. Well, I wanna do those three. Yeah, so do I.
These three projects right here, East Side Water Main, Hoover Hallway, Roundabout, well, lots of free projects. That may be self-funded.
Well, obviously, I've got.
And Cedar Johnson Road.
So, is there any, any way that there would be a, I mean, maybe we're hedging our bets a little bit, but if this build the better blah, blah, blah passes, would there possibly be some, some grant money for a roundabout or for or, or, or even a water, water main upgrades or that type of stuff? Isn't what that whole thing's supposed to be about?
I'm not holding my breath on it, but the problem is the roundabouts, it'll be done coming up before that's gonna get anywhere.
Well, yes and no. I mean, some of the decisions we're making may not be able to be implemented in time. I mean, we may just be.
Question to you is that ninety-eight dollars a year too much?
Hundred dollars a year?
Eight dollars a month.
On a two hundred thousand dollar.
You think it's too much?
I don't see it too much. I don't even think we can get the people to wanna do it. It wasn't like, I don't, a dollar fifty, two bucks for a new school. Dollar forty.
Yeah.
Three dollars, then drop.
And it went down. Ultimately, it was a dollar forty. For thousand.
It had a dollar come off on the.
Yeah.
Jill.
A lot less than eight bucks.
Actually, I thought it was like four bucks they were after. It went down to three when it dropped.
I mean, that was a school, which I guess more people would stomach a brand new school. I'm not sure if people would stomach eight bucks for water mains on the east side of town.
Well, people on the east side of town would probably.
I live on the east side of town. I'm saying it.
Um.
That's my only thing. I mean, I don't think it's too much, but I mean. So the average house in West Ridge would probably be closer to two hundred dollars, four hundred thousand dollars value. Ish.
Your new building.
I'll be three hundred dollars.
Just built by Horton.
My point is if there's no interest in increasing taxes and rates, just in reality, we're not gonna be able to fund the projects. I'll do everything I can not to tap into that, but that's just reality.
I don't think you're telling us anything that we didn't already know.
To me, I, I think if that's the, the, the engine that's, that keeps it going, that's what it's gotta be.
Are we looking at increase both water rates and taxes or one or the other?
Yeah, we've come with some sort of mix. I just wanted a dollar amount to where I need to just tell our consultants we can't, can't do these projects.
Right now, you're saying, saying no TIF. Are we looking at down the road? We can throw TIF on it or no?
Yes, I would. Would this be an additional dollar twenty-two on top of the fifty-one cents that we're already proposing?
Dollar twenty-two is for the water.
Yeah, as I mean, but we're already.
I would drop down some of the employee benefits stuff because I, I, I think there's wiggle room and then there's some, some other things we can look into before I would raise on employee benefits, if that's the route you guys want. Uh, but for sure, the town hall would go up.
We're like seven eighty-five? For thousand, something like that?
Sewer.
Water.
Water. Almost, so. The ten?
It's gonna say, you know, sewer and water rate.
So have a bit of a hard time.
I hear people all the time, but I can't believe my water bill's that high. Well, you know, fifty, you get a five dollar raise in your sewer.
We would've got one more sewer bump.
Yeah.
Three fifteen, two fifteen.
Yep, and then another one once, once it's done.
Yeah, to figure out where we need to land.
Figure where we need to land on the SRF. They'll come back and tell us that we gotta be paying back. I mean, there's two bumps coming on that already.
In twenty sixteen, it was seven seventy-nine per a thousand gallons with seventeen hundred minimum. And then this year in February, six years later, that's almost doubled to fifteen twenty-nine per one thousand gallon.
That's the sewer.
Correct, sewer.
That's just sewer?
That's to pay for them.
The seven seventy-nine is what the water still is.
Think about kind of increase from fifteen to seventeen.
Seven to two fifty.
I'll bet if it's fifteen, we gotta be close, man. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, and then whatever else the RFPs back. Right now, the projected budget increases, we didn't do this right now, you're asking for fifty-one cents, right?
So if you're looking at a dollar seventy-two.
We drops, I'll drop some of that.
Well, so what I was getting at. Was for the water rate, if it's a dollar twenty-two, so that would be, add that to seven seventy-nine, that's gonna be eight, nine bucks. Nine dollars a thousand, yeah, per thousand gallon.
Okay, but if it, if water pays for water, then after we get the project done and paid for, we gonna lower them back down?
You're fine.
We have to paint the water tower. It's gonna be the same way with sewer. You think we're gonna take the sewer rates down after that? No.
And that's gonna be ten years before we can, if we even get that made.
Like taxes and fees rarely, rarely go down.
Because first of all, this, we haven't been making COLA adjustments to our, to our fees, you know, so if it goes up two percent this year and six percent this year and three percent this year, you know, it's already went up ten percent the last three years and we didn't raise it at all. I mean, so.
Chemicals didn't get cheaper?
No.
It's gonna be.
There almost should be a build-in, which I had discussed this before. There should almost be a build-in where you increase those five percent every year. Yeah, just, just put it in there, just done deal. You know, then that keeps you from half into.
Inflation.
Yeah, to make that adjustment, or at least if you do make those adjustments, you can take smaller swings at it to have to.
Like we had to do with sewer rates.
And if it ever gets to where, man, we got so much money, we don't know what to do with, then you just freeze that increase, but it's black.
Water.
All we still have is directed and then I'll kinda give you guys an update as I work with Dave and Maggie. But I gotta push because I know soon we're gonna have to announce the cancel fees.
I wouldn't mind seeing proposals. I kinda have a hard times stomaching, we were gonna raise, raising rates and a bunch of other stuff already. And I can guarantee you, not everybody in this town is, I mean, inflation's gonna hit everybody. I guarantee not everybody's getting a six percent raise at their job. I almost guarantee you that.
I know one question I hear right now is.
All right, I'm growing. We're growing. Why, why do we need to raise taxes? You hear that question?
I can answer it because most of our growth, we're not getting to see the goodies of it. We're tipping everything.
One factor, another factor is the state formula, if their states changing their property tax formula, they're going back on their promises of backfilling some of their tax bill, tax break cuts in twenty thirteen. Some of it would be from TIF, I guess. There's a pro and a con of TIF and one con is essentially we're cutting into future revenue in the general fund. You could make an argument, if that broke, well, it's never gonna happen. Well, then we're gonna see it twenty years from, you know, ten, twenty years, we're gonna see the full, full effects of it. The other, yes, onto that as well. You know, how would we know for sure if we didn't give that incentive back? I don't know everything, either do you guys. There's a pro and a con, everything.
It just doesn't help us make those decisions today. When you tip something, you don't need to make that decision today. Whether it's going to benefit or not, you know, it's going to benefit twenty years from now. Whether it's going to benefit or not. You know, it's going to benefit twenty years from now, if we can get there.
Gotta get that first step. Step up the ladder, I guess. That's what TIP is for. Okay, what's next? Satisfied with around that capital projects discussion?
I would rather just raise one thing.
I would rather raise.
Raise it to the amount that you need. To get your projects done.
Property taxes.
Instead of raising the water when it's only gonna pay for water. Reality, just raise taxes to pay for it. And then, once you've raised the taxes, you can use it on whatever you want. You don't have to just use it on what you raised on water. You can use it on other projects. That way, my taxes are raised. I don't have to ask. Where'd you spend my extra water money?
But then you're breaking that, you're breaking that rule. The, the same rule that you think you have by, by not.
I didn't make that rule, so I don't, you know, I don't know where that rule came from.
Because if you're using outside money to pay for water stuff, then, then water isn't paying for water. My first go around on the council, the water was being subsidized by the general fund.
Right.
I said, this is crazy.
Colton's right, too. We need it. Water rates need to go up a little bit every year. Because. Salaries are getting, everything's going up.
I, I guess if we were gonna.
Chemicals?
Yep. All those different, I mean, a bunch of different proposals, but you know, there's. But this project's gonna be broken out into there, there may be sewer costs, or maybe storm sewer costs, there's road costs, there's water costs. And, and that's great, but then maybe all that money should come from, from either it's different sectors or. You subsidize the whole project, not water, not sewer, not just the project with, with the general fund, which means you raised.
And to do that, if it's, if there's a bunch of road and storm sewer, it may not be a terrible idea for it to be property taxes, just so you're not intermingling.
Right. Well, water would never pay for a project. Water won't pay for water on a project like that.
No.
It never would.
No, because we're redoing roads, we're gonna actually do the road. Well, I thought we were replacing the roads. And then storm sewer will have to be updated at the same time.
Because I believe they're putting curbs in, so I mean, that's gonna.
Right.
Create.
So you need box over.
The seaside water project, that's something we're looking to do this fiscal year.
That's another question. If we are, I'm gonna have to raise. Our taxes.
I think.
We're just a project, we wait a year.
I'm, I'm for waiting a year and get, get our funding better in order for it. So wait a year. Um, we just brought it up. You brought it up like ten months ago.
What?
The inside water.
Uh, excuse me? The very first year I was on.
Sorry.
Remember?
Okay.
I, I would. We were gonna increase water rates. I would rather push this project back another year and then increase water rates a little bit this year, a little bit next year.
I agree with that.
I can go forward with that. Makes my job easier.
Then that, that might help.
We got the roundabout.
Some of these other projects done. We may, we may have gotten more here, but not than we can chew right now. We need to get. We need to get our general fund. In order. Because if we wanna use TIF money to do some of these projects, that general fund has to be increased.
You know why there's still water main over on the east side? Because every council. Has said, why don't we get our shit together before we do that project? It never gets done. Keeps getting put on. Until we lose somebody's house. You guys aren't gonna see it. Why buy a new fire truck? Why spend a million dollars on a new fire truck if you can't hook it to our goddamn hydrant?
Putting all water.
Although, why in the creek? We can draft out of the creek.
Just like our, our sewer rates have gone up and we put that money aside to pay for the sewer project.
I'm not sure that we put it aside.
The water would be put, could be put aside. To specifically help pay for this water.
Have we put it aside? Is there a somewhere account?
Yeah, I saw a special sewer fund. I would imagine that's what that was.
Yes, I'm, I'm moving about. Jody.
Seven fifty-eight. No, no.
That's a regular one. Right below it says special sewer fund.
I'm, I move about.
Probably just paid the engineer.
Well, there's two hundred eighteen thousand dollars in there.
I think there was more. Okay.
Time for Colton's bathroom break.
I've done good. Wait, almost hour and a half.
Wanna take a break or me? I'm curious about the roundabout. I mean, we are. As far as I'm concerned, we're still up in the air whether that's even gonna happen. Because they're not gonna, they're not printing any estimates of what this thing's gonna cost if we have to pay for a bigger section of it.
I think it's a given, we will have to pay for a bigger section of it.
If we go ahead and do it.
Right. Okay, so then the question is, do we do it now or do we do it later? Never at all.
Do it later.
We do it later, it's just.
Walking away from Johnson County and I have to fund hundred percent of it.
Or will Johnson County have to still?
They would still do what's on their portion.
Well, they're, they're, they've got a lot of integrity and I have all the confidence in the world that they would honor that.
They won't have an incentive to replace an interstate. And have an emergency rally.
Firstly, I would rather gut it out now, get it done. That's my opinion.
That'd be the greatest.
I re, I really, I don't have any hope that if we would delay this, Johnson County would come back and, and finish, finish it to Cedar Johnson. Right, right now, that contract or the bid that they have is gonna go just down the hill from Kevin.
Yeah. If we don't decide it, that's where it's gonna end.
And they're gonna sit there and go, well, the reason we did that is because West Branch couldn't make up their mind. And then that'll be that little section or of that nobody ever claims, they want them early, take care of it. You know, it'd be like.
We'll claim it because we're now gonna annex in all the way up.
That's what they're waiting for. That's probably why they quit it, three hundred yards short. Oh, I, I know, she probably just, she probably said that one time at that count. Well, they're gonna annex for some year, let's just quit. Three hundred yards short.
So that means that we have to do it, so then, once it's done, then we can go back and annex again.
That's right.
And it's Kevin.
Oh, he'd be on the outside of the road. Everything by, just the road to the right.
So my opinion is you missed, I, I think we need to gut it out, find a way to get the roundabout done. I'm not sure how. You got turn lane money, well, do we? We don't know.
I see that'll be announced. That would be if it pays off, if the turn lane doesn't pay off, we wouldn't be agreeing on that deal that's happened between KLM and Morley, so.
So, well, I'm talking school turn lane. That was here before, we'd be budgeted a hundred thousand, hundred and fifty. Which is about a third of it.
So we're looking at a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand, so we're looking, by the time this is all said and done, this roundabout is gonna come in the turn lane. So a million dollars, it's gonna cost us a million dollars.
I think that's what I said one other time.
Can't see it being a million, but.
If you say seven, then it's a million, I guarantee it.
I'm with you, Colton.
So that's, I'm not saying that that means we don't do it, I'm just saying, okay, now where's a million dollars gonna come from? We might borrow.
Instead of being three million dollar bond, it'd be three and a half.
So you're talking about just roping it into the. I don't think we got that kind of time. I guess if we do it all this year, yeah.
So you're telling me that a roundabout's more important than water main?
Well, you wanna walk away from three quarters of a million dollars?
Heidi has been coming time to make some comments.
Oh, yeah.
But she wasn't able to speak. I went and messed with some settings, so I told her to try again.
Wonder how long she's been trying.
A while.
So Cor, everybody else can hear, but. Go ahead.
Also, you gotta remember about that project, you probably never get it done any cheaper than you're gonna do it now, because they're there. I mean, you do it, maybe you do it a year or two later, they're gonna be, I mean.
All no, new mobilization. Just on mobilization.
And they need that, remember, they need that dirt.
We don't know.
Well, they need dirt for the project backwards. So.
So we make a deal. We'll do.
It's their dirt, though.
I'll sell you some dirt.
It's not their dirt if they're not gonna come to the project. They're not coming to the roundabout, they won't have any.
Let's hold that to their, hold that fire, see how, well, that works.
Interstate's gonna leave a lot of dirt. Million yards.
I don't know, some big ass.
Get some extra dirt from you.
Oh, I don't, I doubt it. They probably usually just take that.
So, um, back to the three million dollar. Still not working.
Well, she needs to turn that slash off of her microphone and unmute.
Why, I mean, you're in it, right? Yeah.
Check that where it says allow participants to unmute themselves.
Thanks a lot for that help. I appreciate it. No, it's not clicked, it's not checked, so I told them to leave and come back. Sometimes if they will disconnect and then reconnect, it'll help.
Could we borrow just one borrowing for the roundabout and then water project?
From your.
Well, that's.
You have so many fees you gotta pay for.
Do it once?
We discuss this.
Yeah. She's, Maggie said two at the most, two askings at the most. We're gonna do, we need to.
I have a question. Do we, do we have a contract with B and K?
Yeah.
That would sign?
Services contract?
Yeah. That says how much, like, how much of an increase do they increase their fees? Because last year we paid. Five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. So there's a half million.
While that stuff gets reimbursed.
Two percent.
A lot of that's reimbursed. A lot of that fee is.
Interstate.
But not even that, yeah.
It's housing.
All the housing and all that, that goes through that. So if somebody built a house, they gotta have a site plan, he reviews it, then that property owner has to pay him. Pay, it goes through the city, but then they get paid back, so it's showing up there that his expenses and that, but.
Well, he designed the, they designed the water main relocation, too.
Yeah.
That was, that was a major portion of it.
Right.
Plus I got us a seven hundred thousand dollar grant. I mean, well, yeah, that's, matter of fact, that half a million probably has a bunch of our sewer.
Sewer plant.
Sewer plant, I.
That'll get reimbursed, well, no.
I mean, I'm, don't, make no mistake.
Can you guys hear me now?
Now.
You can hear me?
I can't hear Heidi either.
Heidi, can we hear you? Yeah, go ahead.
She's talking.
Can you hear me?
Still can't hear you, Heidi.
Adam?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know, it's not working. It's saying that, uh, the host. Um, cannot unmute me, so it's, it's like a setting or something.
All quiet, we can hear that, so we're, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I am transferring every month about, um, fifty-three thousand dollars from sewer to that special sewer. Fund, so that is happening every month.
Okay, that's to B and K? Oh.
No.
Yeah.
Got it.
That'll be raised.
That's a pretty good chunk.
Yeah.
That's what we ought to do. Maybe that's what we ought to do, just match our water to our sewer. That's how most towns do it, right? That's the same for both.
It may quite have been late, but wait.
Tell them so.
Anything else, Heidi?
Well, later on, I'm gonna do a presentation for City Hall and Treasure, but no, that was it for now. I just wanted to answer Jody's question on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry about the technical difficulties.
Alright, that's alright, that happens. Okay, where are we, where are we at now? Works now.
You're welcome.
Well, I got some general direction to go with. Funding those projects and then. Try and speed up those conversations like Ian with Maggie. Now that Maggie and Dave are back in, I'll call them until I get something figured out with them.
Adam, we did one, one question here on the capital project discussion. You said you were getting a few different estimates from Dave. How bad are they?
They're. That's where we'll need to clarify, whether it's that fifty-fifty in the middle of Cedar Johnson or not. I do. I did hear that Johnson County has not purchased right-of-way area yet, so they cannot get out until they purchase that. Now, there was the goal of bidding it out in the next thirty days. I don't. To buy land and right-of-way land is, you might know more than that, I haven't talked to you. So that's. I've never seen anybody willingly give away land in thirty days. That's.
You know, we can stall it. Just be grumpy.
I, I don't think we're gonna hit those goals on that. I, I don't think we're gonna hit those goals on that. Continue to put for it, but just.
Could we have to raise taxes to pick that one?
If we include it in like a three and a half million dollar, three. And we could front, if it's, timing's an issue, we could front money, but we would want our debt to go back.
I was just curious. I was just curious with the roundabout costs coming in.
Probably include it in the bond.
Yeah, no, no, that's why I was asking, because I was, I'm kind of with Julie a little bit, I'd have no problem raising taxes for the widening or the water mains, but are the stomach around about, I mean, I, it's one of those things where it's, it's the opportune time to do it, so I understand. But I would not put that one above the other two as far as effect on the community. So, it's kind of a, I'm, it's a little bit of an awkward place.
Except inevitably, that, that's how it was gonna get paid for, whether it was happened this year or next year, because even if we didn't raise taxes, you're taking that money from somewhere else that it probably couldn't have been taken from.
Yeah, but I'd rather raise money to get, and it's water main, or raise money so downtown doesn't flood, and raise money to get a big concrete circle.
No.
That, that was my point. But then it's about the best opportune time you can get to do the.
I don't think if we don't do it this year, it will never get done.
Yeah, that's what I mean, that's why I'm saying it's.
You need to pick that cherry while it's.
Yeah, I get it, but at the same time, to me, like I said, I'm doing it, it's hardest, I understand it, but to me, it's hardest on me.
Here, and here's the jacked up thing about it, was that they kind of sprung it on us that they were gonna do this, but did they, cuz we knew they were gonna, for the last seven years, they were gonna improve Hoover, Hoover Highway, so we knew it was coming. And we chose to not do anything to.
They knew, there was no communication with them.
Cuz they were talking about, they've been talking about redoing her Hoover Highway since I was like.
All of a sudden, we had to make a decision, we had like three meetings to make a decision.
Yeah, they've been talking about redoing that road for twenty-five plus years, so every year they say, oh, okay, I mean, it's, the way you cries wolf, and all of a sudden, they're like, oh, hey, we're halfway done. I was really surprised that they said they were gonna do the second half this year, which by the sounds of it, I mean.
So, we, uh, hear the bitch one time and raise taxes a dollar instead of fifty cents? Make a project?
Has anybody said, hey, you paved that road and put that roundabout in, and then we'll sign a twenty-eighty agreement, we'll just assume the responsibility of this road.
For the next.
Forever, all we go, Oasis, and then, and we'll pay you five grand.
Maybe you get five more grand for a little bit more road. We'll take the, all of it.
Man, it worked once, right?
I'd be more apt to. Draw all three into one tax raise, than to just say, hey, we're raising taxes twenty-five cents to pay for a roundabout, or say, hey, we're raising them a dollar fifty, downtown might not flood, east side will get water. And by the way, we'll get, we'll get a roundabout, but at least you're getting, all three are good, I would just say that as far as community impacts, two are bigger than others. I'd rather get them want, if somebody hard wants, you get all this stuff.
That's how we did the last capital improvement plan, we had, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna raise your taxes this amount.
We borrowed eight hundred thousand for five years. That last plan.
And not a single per, well, I think, actually, even we put the park stuff was in our capital improvement plan, so that was a part of it too. Yeah, but.
Well.
I'd rather do one shot.
If you do it this way, you can actually see that we can actually afford to be able to do Cedar Johnson Road.
What, one of the things.
I mean, maybe not this year.
I mean, if we actually raise the general fund taxes when we do these three projects.
Five years, whenever that debt expires, if you were to do these projects in it.
Whenever Kobe falls off, you do Cedar Johnson Road.
It's twenty-twenty.
Now, you're just delaying Cedar Johnson, cuz we wanted to get that done in five years. We wanna do a lot of stuff. That requires money. Or five, five or six, if we're gonna sit around here and raise taxes for the next half decade. We're gonna have to start picking or choosing some stuff where we're not gonna be sitting.
How long we been on, uh, creek widening? How many years?
Four, yeah, at least four years.
That's sorry, before we start.
So, these have all been on here, so you, yeah, Cedar Johnson Road's got at least another three years.
That's gonna be in the general fund. I guess to kind of explain the big picture of what's going on a little bit. I would say, number of things that I run into that makes me queasy, I'll kind of mention you those, but I guess I've seen it as maybe last several years, the multiple years in multiple administrations, but I would say there's probably been a limited guide, guiding hand for council regarding future costs of new staff and new projects, and what I mean by that is there may be something opposed. Maybe I don't disagree with you, but I may say, if you do this, we may not be able to do that, I don't know how many of those, had a lot of those conversations, but for example, when we hire new staff, maybe, well, we may not be able to afford the merit cases, or maybe we won't be able to do project A and B, I don't know if a lot of those conversations have happened over the years, um, but I would say if you hear that from me, it's not me saying I disagree with you, it's more or less me trying to help you understand, when you act one way, there's an adverse reaction somewhere else.
I mean, Colton's only that, where's that money coming from? Well, we got it, no, I'm going to answer.
Well, it's funded, well, where's the money at?
Well, we don't have the money, but it's funded.
Or, no, it's actually the other way around, it's in the budget, yeah, but it's not funded. Well, then what the hell is it in the budget for?
Yeah, to have it if he's budgeting and anything he wanted to, and then just coming back saying, oh, it's not funded.
So, we'll move to a couple of things that I've found. Um, I know we've been paying off some internal loans to Second Street College, Street Bridge, so that money has been used to subsidize the general fund, hasn't been going back into some reserve accounts of future projects, when we borrow against ourselves for projects, we need to go back in the savings for future projects, not subsidize expenses. We probably paid, I don't know, two hundred and sixty to three hundred and fifty thousand for the general fund, we're sitting at three hundred and fifty thousand, so either A, it's been subsidizing it, or B, I, I, I'm being tracked for it. So, that kind of, that kind of worries me, um, just talking with staff, seems like multiple um, administrations, again, maybe they thought they were doing what was right at the time, but when a new staff member was being needed, they would kind of fiddle around with where salaries were coming out of, so they could hire someone, you know, a year or two earlier, and it's hitting us now because increases in revenue haven't hit those projections, so there's been times in the past where a, you know, police officer is needed or whatever, just as an example, so then they would throw maybe my salary more underwater to or someone else, and that's partly why we don't always have enough money for projects in water and sewer, because twenty thousand a year, my salary's coming out there. Downhill budget, I didn't like to see that we're going down ten thousand a year, I'd like to either have us be balanced or a small surplus, we're gonna need a renewed roof at some point, or new window or something. On a historic property, forty-five thousand dollars.
Just real quick, and I said something to Adam about this, that building turns a hundred years old in twenty-thirty-two. It would be cool to figure out what the new purpose would be for it or something, you know, it would be cool for that thing to be standing tall and looking good on its own. So, that gives us ten years.
Start thinking about it now.
I think you guys know this, but general fund's been subsidizing trash and recycling by about sixteen thousand a year, so that'd be something, you know, it'd be nice to cushion that off, and in this budget, it's off, so it's, it's calculated, we decide not to have, yes, solid waste, these pay for, that sixty thousand will be in the hole in general. And a couple other things.
Time out. You just gonna say general fund's not gonna pay for anymore, how are you deciphering and gets paid for? I mean, we're paying for, for junk, with general fund, cuz that's where the money needed to come from, so are you suggesting that we raise our garbage fund, we give, take that tipping fee and pass it on, cuz it's the tipping fee, right?
So, we're only getting reimbursed for what? Johnson County refuse's charges, not the tipping fee.
So, what does that come out to on their water bill, a month, do you know?
Per month, if you're talking.
What?
Like nine hundred count.
Sixteen dollars.
Well, two dollars, just saying, two dollars a year.
Basically, a dollar fifty a month per house.
Garbage please for garbage.
That's, again, you're fine to interrupt me, I'm just trying to get water to pay for water, trash to pay for trash.
Fortunately, that went, that was a huge increase, but.
Yeah, we might have switched over, if, if we're gonna, that needs to be ramped up in a couple of years, man.
Well, that was kind of, we had discussed doing that when we went to the cards, and we thought that was a small price for the city to pay, right? Yeah, because they were trying to tell us, that other clown was trying to tell us we didn't have to pay the sixteen thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, that's.
It's a rock solid contract, I mean, it's.
Yeah, which, which that.
We remember Cedar County.
Yeah, I mean, which meant, if you live here, you tried to go up and use a transfer station, they would say, oh, let me see your ID, and say, I'm from West Branch, they'd take it to off our property.
Or that means it's covered with mess.
That would still need to be passed by policy, I don't have the authority to say.
Yes.
Sixteen thousand. But I'm just warning you, that's what's in this budget, so if you guys say no, redo the policy, instead of being at plus six thousand, you're at minus ten thousand.
So, what do you mean by that's what's in this budget, you, you've already rolled in sixteen thousand to?
Hypothetically, yes, but I can't.
Oh.
I can't do it without your authority and reservation.
This is his recommend. He saw the pass.
We're on the agenda for Monday night. Do we do it right then, or do we wait, why don't we just wait till we figure out what we're gonna raise in the water to? Just kick them all at once instead of two different times. Three readings.
What are you looking for right now?
Uh, nothing, I'm just informing you what's. Couple things still to look out for is building incentive program, we still have to do those promises for the next five years, that's hitting our budget pretty bad in the next five years.
Yeah.
Still got paperwork, though. People signed up just.
Oh.
Technically, my house qualifies, my building permit is. Before what?
You qualify for the veterans just yet.
We don't, we don't have the policy.
Just label.
Yeah. But you can't have both.
Only if they.
Yeah.
Increase pressure to use tip dollars on projects, just so you guys are aware, we talked about it, and it does affect the future general fund growth. Taking our thirty dollars and ten cents into a new project, so say in Chad Cooney's projects, um, we may have a growth of a hundred thousand dollars, but say we're gonna tip all of it to pay for east side water mains. If we weren't doing that, thirty-three thousand or so would go in the general fund, or whatever, we, since we're using it as tip, not getting that thirty-three thousand in the general fund, spending all that a hundred thousand, getting county, getting brown. With school, going to. So, they're just, couple things to be wary of when we're doing ten agreements is what, what we want to do looks for, and how assertive do we want to be? Kevin and I are trying to find a way of paying for the increase on fire department time, uh, using some of our money that we got from COVID, hoping that if the county doesn't pass some of those expenses, or that, that, I guess, that increase in revenue, then we're hoping that the fire fire fund would pay for the second year, and hopefully, third year will have to be something. So, that's, just be wary of that, that, you know, in two or three years, we may be spending that money on the general fund, right now, it's thirty-three thousand.
So, that, that's that COVID emergency response fund that we have fifty thousand dollars there?
Roughly fifty, yeah.
And you're planning on taking thirty-three, putting that in the fire department to leave us a projected ending balance of seventeen thousand?
I will move into overall general fund. So, we can see only surplus of about six thousand, um, still keeping the general fund levy at eighty dollars and ten cents, there's still other things on our property levy, but as I kind of mentioned, it's basically a ten dollar, thousand dollar increase when you subtract the backfill, and there's inflation and increased needs, or stuff that, just kind of repeating that less, eighteen percent less in workable dollars. Then we'll move into fire budget.
Yeah, can you take a break? Short, short break. Okay, I think I understand why. What? Can't agree with finance director pissed off all the time. Yeah. If we sit down and talk to somebody and know what the hell they're doing, I can understand now why Gordon was mad all the time. If you sit down and talk to somebody and know what the hell they're doing, I can understand now why Gordon was mad all the time.
Well, the argument I'd give you with that is if that was the case, then Gordon was pissed for his communication.
Oh, no.
Of why.
Why?
Well, Adam has a bullet point here.
Well, Gordon also kind of thought that was.
Financial tricks with multiple administrations.
No, I know.
Gordon?
Former, former administrator.
I didn't understand what he was doing.
He did a good job of moving money around.
Butler? It was like a shell game, man.
Say, I don't think he was any better, I just think. Doing the.
About moving the money from here to here to here to here to here to.
Make things look pretty, you know, what you ask every year.
How we end up with a four million dollar budget?
Well, that's how, that's how when. When the second administration took over. Redmond, I mean, Roger and all of us came in here with me because we was in dire straits, like we were gonna talk about start selling stuff.
It'll be a little bit of a mother hen here and be careful how much you're saying about previous staff. You recorded, so just remember that.
While we're at a break, can you guys hear me? Yeah, go ahead, Chip. You guys all have what I had for my budget. So right at the top, Adam said, I was asking for thirty-three thousand dollars more this year for on-call pay. What that does is pays three people to be on call every night, basically this on-call is for med calls. We get a fire call, everybody should be coming, but. We're really having a hard time getting people to sign up and be on call to get up in the middle of the night for, you know, these, these med calls we're getting. And it's, our numbers are just raising more and more all the time, well, that's kind of what that is. And also that, that puts somebody on call during the weekend, hopefully if I can get people to sign up. On call during days on the weekend too. You know, that's my guarantee, I'm still can get people to sign up by paying them, that's what I'm hoping to do. So that's thirty-three thousand. And I did cut some other areas just because we're talking about the truck, the other big thing is our truck. We're not, we're not keeping up with inflation on our set aside for our truck fund. I had proposed a new truck. I had figured six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a new truck, so I called them up because I knew we were getting, it was getting close. It was proposed for twenty-two, twenty-three. So I called up one of the manufacturers, said, hey, here's what, here's what we're looking at, what do you think it costs? He said, well, I got bad news, he said, we made up fifteen percent this year alone. I mean, fifteen percent on six hundred and seventy-five, so he came back to me as at eight hundred and forty thousand dollars per truck, if we bought it today. He said, the next two years, we're proposing at least five to seven percent for the next two years. If you put, if you look at that, that's, that's fifty thousand dollars a year on that truck. Plus, plus it compounds, you put fifty on that truck and it's just compounding, so right now I'm asking for another, I'm putting another, I want to put another fifteen thousand dollars. On set aside, so that brings it up to a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year. And I did make some cuts, you can see where I cut and added on, on some light, I, I used to, but. We do have a little more, bit more revenue from the townships, our township revenue came up by seven, seven thousand, six hundred dollars more than last year. Basically, what we're asking thirty-two thousand dollars more from the city this year, most of that is for, you know, we could get it from the COVID money. And I talked to Adam about the truck, we're, we're really not sure, we have to try to sit down and figure out. A spreadsheet, to really see when we can afford that truck, but the longer we wait, the more money and all more, more. I think we're gonna sit down sometime when we get done with this budget and try to figure out when, when a good time. There was, the other thing is it's a year and a half, it takes a year and a half right now, if we ordered it, it's a year and a half away.
Can, can you lock in on a price?
Yeah, once you, once you get, yeah, it locks you in, once you get the price. Once you put it out for bid and get the bid on it.
So, well, and you was proposed to.
So my thing, when the truck was, what I had. It was twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
So you're a couple hundred thousand off from being able to get it if you was to go write a check today?
Well, I, I don't know where we are right now, I, I think we'll be really close when we sit down and figure it out, because our, we've got a, we've got a truck that's worth probably a hundred thousand dollars. Got four hundred sitting there right now, the end of this year, I've got another hundred and twenty on to that, so that's five twenty. That we'll have at the end of this fiscal year we're in. So. When we sit down and figure it up, I think we'll be really close to being able to probably do it sometime.
Here, here's what I'm getting at, is if we're gonna end up bonding for some road projects and it's three point two million dollars. Is, is it going to be that big of a deal if we throw another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that to square him up? Not deplete his set aside maybe, so he's a little bit further ahead for the next project? And then.
I mean, ask a bond attorney, we can throw all those together. But that's an option.
If it's general fund that's paying it back, what the hell's the difference?
There's state laws in terms of what you can, can levy for without voter approval. Normally, it's up to a certain dollar amount for what's called corporate purposes, I, I just am not that familiar. You could very well be right.
I don't know if we're gonna be that far off, and I think we'll be, I mean, we haven't sat down and put, put, put the numbers together, but I think we're gonna be really close. With the trade, with that one truck that not trade in, but we can sell that one truck, I think it's probably worth it, the truck we're replacing probably for a hundred thousand.
Well, it might be worth more than that if a new one's.
Well, I've already, I had, I already, I bumped it up, I already had, I had that truck at fifty, and I already bumped it up, I bumped it up. And we might be able to get more of, but I, I want to be somewhat conservative. And even that eight forty is probably conservative, I mean, that might be a little more than, we haven't sat down and spec the truck out, so I don't know exactly what it was gonna cost. Hopefully, that eight forty is high, because.
Five twenty to eight forty, that's. I don't know, what do you mean?
Oh, we have five twenty seven there. What?
Gonna have five twenty by the end of.
Like, by the end of this year, this fiscal year, I'll buy twenty.
Next year's money too, because it's a year and a half out.
Plus, we have a year and a half to save for yet.
Six forty.
Grant, I think due in September, that the federal government that's for emergency response equipment that I'm like, uh, with ECIA about, but. I've seen they've supported some of our equipment. Something to keep our eye on, I just saw that.
That, that's kind of why I'm raising my, I mean, our inflation rate, as you guys all know, is last year or so is not been good.
I've noticed this. Emergency response deal is a problem in every town, if you, you look at the city of West Liberty, they're looking for an EMT. If you look at Tipton, they're looking for an EMT, you know, but I got them.
Well, I think Adam mentioned too, so that. You know, that one, you know, he, he was kind of concerned about funding it, you know, down the road. Well, hopefully, we can get the central service pass, you know, it might take a few years, I don't know how long it's gonna take, but. I think we could probably fund, you know, with a couple more hometown days, we can probably, if we have to go another year, we could probably fund, you know, fund some of that out of our. Our firefighter account too, we, you know, we're a half a year, so we're a year and a half away before we run out of the thirty-three thousand, basically.
Well, there's seventeen more we could throw in there.
So like I said, if we gotten, we run into the next year, we could probably, hopefully with a couple of good hometown days, we could probably help out with that too. Hopefully, our town, our both counties will step up and get a pass. Questions?
You wanna point out that our townships do help out quite a bit, we're getting roughly two hundred thousand in revenue from our townships. Cities only funding, in the past, it's only been funded about forty thousand, so. With the, with the on-call, I'd be seventy thousand, so that we're funding out of the general.
That, that's maxed out.
Yeah, and I, I guess a lot of departments came in and asked, and I got from their ass, I didn't feel like we had a place. That on fire based off of the townships or planes paying a good, good chunk of the city. Thanks, David.
And we'll test it, can you guys hear me? So it sounds like. Our lady behind the, behind door number two got it figured out. Uh, so basically, we're looking at, uh, our revenues are pretty much just what the school helps fund with our twenty-eight year agreement for Officer Steen's wages. Uh, we did, um, as with just about everybody else, some of our capital equipment set aside. Uh, was reduced this year to kind of better balance things, but we kept our squad car. Set aside at par to keep everything on schedule. And then, excuse me, this coming fiscal year, we're on track to complete the project of our handgun. Exchange, so. Uh, we should be pretty good and, and honestly, with our reduction this year in our equipment set aside. We should be okay since we don't have to plan for future radio upgrades. Uh, two years from now, uh, which if you recall was in our equipment set aside plan. And then just on the horizon, next year will be. I should say that fiscal year twenty-four will be the Durango gets replaced.
If you remember all what you kind of cut back on, so you could make sure you're sticking on that eight-year rotation, I know you felt that was an important.
Yeah, so, uh, in our discussions. Uh, fought pretty hard for the vehicle set aside just because. I asked for an increase this year from thirty thousand to thirty-five thousand, just because everything costs more. But basically, what we do is, so if you factor out, uh, we put away seventy thousand dollars over two years. Uh, that pretty much buys everything in the car, computer. Uh, lights, everything. And so you take all of that equipment that's eight years old when it gets replaced and it's, and it's purchased new and. And so that's pretty much where we're sitting, so we tweaked a couple of our line items within the budget, reduced those down. Uh, but we should still be pretty good.
Or anything, I guess, in the future horizon that council should know that's affecting the police world? Outside of non-intelligence.
Yeah, it all depends on our growth, I mean, if the city all of a sudden booms. One of the things you're gonna want to keep in the back of your mind is at some point. Additional staff has to come into the discussion, I mean, it's, it's inevitable, so. Just keep that in the back of your head, and that's obviously staff is the most expensive thing. PD wise that we bring to the table, so.
What's that threshold, Cory, thirty-five hundred?
Oh, the, there's several schools of thought, I mean, you can. Several communities use different models, but. The way, the way you want to look at it, at least in my opinion, is. Your, your tax base expects twenty-four hour service, period. Um, that's what they're paying for. And we can give them twenty-four hour services, however, some of that time is delayed. And when it's, you know, your emergency, I don't know if you'd appreciate it being delayed, but. The, you know, the threshold was, you know, there's some places that have one officer per thousand people, and there's other places that have. You know, five officers per thousand people, so. It all, it's just dependent on kind of where you're at and where the city is financially. And obviously, we'll do the best we can do with what we're given.
Okay.
I will jump into general fund, road and streets and cemetery. Matt wants to time it, he can, but I did tell him the big section of his budget's gonna be next. Just give you a general update on general fund, roads and streets. Pat's never had a good idea of what is for general fund streets and what is for road use tax, the way I guess I. I tried to kind of direct staff was if it's city hall staff time, we would just charge that under general fund and charge. Tax. And then some of the beautification projects slash sidewalks that aren't covered by road use tax, so. Uh, your tree trimming, we moved that from streets to general fund. Couple other things, I did cut down on just a little bit from tree trimming from twenty-five thousand to twenty thousand. I just cautioned you that with our older tree stock, that's not hundred percent the greatest decision, but I was trying to find things to make the balanced budget, so. Keep in mind, I guess that's just my suggestion, you can disagree with it. I had to do something to get us closer. To balance budget. And then cemetery. One of the things we did to help balance the road use tax fund is typically, we've had. Three part timers, um, one would help cemetery, one would help kind of, uh. Parks and Rec, the other one kind of helps in and out between the two plus streets, uh, so. One of the things I proposed was to drop one of those part timer, one of those seasonal positions. Um, that would entail if we did that. There would be one full-time position that would do a little bit more mowing and park, fall field work than what has been done the last year. That wasn't a big substantial cut when you're talking park during full-time, but that was about a ten, fifteen thousand dollar cut. Again, that was just me trying to find ways to keep services going with all these changes. I did talk with both Matt and Melissa, we've got a staff member in mind on who that would be. That would entail a little. That would entail, um, a little bit more help from public works. Um, and then it would take a little bit more of just some assistance, making sure certain things are getting done. So probably Matt and myself that time to time need to double check to make sure parks and cemetery are, are kept track of it. Melissa, but we kind of felt that was the better direction to go into. Don't know what your thoughts are. Yes, I'd rather just protect the full-time workers before.
Apparently, the public works fields, they have enough time to take on that afterward.
Now, and we'll talk with some of the, how much, but how much they had for projects last year were, was too much for two reasons. A, staffing, and then B, financially, the amount of products we did this year just can't, can't continue to happen. They gave me their initial budget, they were a hundred and twenty thousand over. So that's kind of my call to do a, a streets plan, just like we do a capital improvement plan. We need to kind of balance out, are we gonna do fifty thousand every year for projects? Is that where we're just staying disciplined? I, I get it, infrastructure's an important part. That's, um, why you guys are, were elected. Um, but I think we just need to maintain discipline between everyone, city hall, um, that, that department, council. So I think that's, that was kind of my purpose for putting that in, I guess, goals and. Strategic goals for this year, to have some sort of plan, so we can at least have the discussion, say if green view is the most important thing to do. Then we can at least go to our, our streets plan and say, well, if we do green view, we have to take out six street or whatever. So now we're just disciplined. If you know that green view is on Matt's streets plan, we'll, we'll talk about that, um, next month.
That's, that's the water? What are you talking about?
Uh, the straightening and then getting rid of the trees that are out by that circle. I don't know about the water, Matt would have to. We, he would be talking about water too next.
There's a bad water main in front of him. I don't think you're, that's what you're talking about.
That, that.
He's been one of our projects.
Wanted to replace it for two years now.
Hopefully, it doesn't break again this year.
Uh, Melissa. Okay, so I'm gonna go over kind of what we cut or what we reduced or restructured. Um, in the capital improvements line, so we had money set aside there to pave the path around the playground. Um, at Veronica Park. Originally, Matt had wanted to do it as a three-year plan. He thought it was about five to six thousand a year. We kind of cut that out of there. That's something council would like, and we can always add that back in. So we, we cut from there, that line. Um, we're no longer gonna be subsidizing men's basketball league. So that's something that'll come unless we can generate the funds in advance, then we can coordinate that, but that's one of the items that we cut. We're then kind of going over where we're increasing a little bit. We found that this first year of operating the concession stands, our numbers were pretty much based off what we had done with the old summer league field. Well, that was not gonna cut it, both on, on expenditures and revenue, um, which is good. That they, so we're increasing that on both directions quite a bit. I anticipate that's not gonna be a problem. To generate that revenue at all. Currently, we have confirmed the same number of rentals, and then we have twelve other ones. And I'm just waiting on dates that we're waiting on with paperwork, so we're doubling what we did last year, so I am. I don't see an issue making that revenue at all.
I have a question on, so when, um, you rent the ball diamonds out on a weekend for an out-of-town tournament. What, what's that be?
It is two fifty for an out-of-town team, and then the second day it's one seventy-five.
So.
And we increased that from the first year we had it, so it didn't increase.
So then are, are they charging admission to get in?
So they, they can charge admission. Um, however, patrons that just want to come and use the park, they want to use the playground, they want to use the trails. They want to use the pickleball courts. Our citizens don't pay a fee to get into the park for those things. It's just for the patrons going to the games.
Wondering if they're making more money on their tournaments than what we are making rented out to them.
Well, most likely because they're paying.
How it works.
Yeah, that's, they're, they're paying the referees, they're paying their umpires.
I understand that, but if they're charging five dollars a head to get in there. And they got three hundred people coming in there, they're making a pretty good chunk of money to use our ball diamond.
Kind of like when you run a basketball tournament at the school, you still charge usually admission, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, it, we can definitely look at raising the rates if you want to. It's not a problem.
I don't know if they're the way, you know, if they want to charge an admission. Then there's another fee. I understand that they have to pay their umpires and, and I know we're getting the concession money. Um, we hope, I mean, sometimes they bring their own food and their own drinks, and we don't even use, don't use our concessions, so.
We're doing pretty good on concession. I think, um, last year we had, I'm not looking at my numbers off the top of my head. I budgeted, I don't know, moderate, because there was, you know, three thousand, four thousand, something like that, and it was close to thirteen thousand. So they, they are using our concession stands, which really, really surprised me. I'll be honest. I thought after COVID hits, I know I wouldn't be using. I, I would be bringing my own thing. And, and a lot of diamonds also, they make the, the rules that they can't bring in outside food. So that's also something that we could do too.
You know, I don't know how many employees you have there on a tournament day, but it just makes another, it makes a person, he's a bad guy. You, you can't bring food in here.
I mean, that could definitely be something that we look at. I mean.
A lot of times a sign is good enough.
Yeah.
Somebody's gonna walk in with something, they're gonna walk in with something regardless.
Yeah.
I've seen people walk by people that work for places that obviously brought outside stuff, and it's not worth it, but a sign typically will. Ease most people or make them think twice.
Think twice about, there's always those that.
That's me.
I wouldn't be that concerned with raising the rates. If we got to where it will fill up all the time and you thought you could get away with it, that's fine, but. To me, it'd be more important to have it full, people using it than it's sitting there empty.
Kind of did it when we raised them. We did a little cost, a little comparison with the communities, what they were charging. So we're right in line, we're cheaper than some places, more expensive than more. Like I said, that's not, and we can definitely raise it, we can look at our policy for. Not this coming spring, but the following, where we just say, you can put a sign up, no outside food, but I'll be honest, we, we struggle. Um, to keep up with the demand. It is, it is very busy over lunchtime, and especially on a Sunday tournament. There's not a whole lot of local businesses, and it's also helpful because they go to the local businesses here. I mean, I love to see that on Saturday, they're gonna go down to Heaven News or something like that.
Do our fees, do our fees pay for our employees working day? Or do we use in the concession to pay for our employees?
Both, yeah, just, just fees alone when you do it, but concession revenue will. And we kind of bunch that together when we figure out staffing hours, and how we do staffing too, is Jamie is there. Um, Jamie and myself a lot of times, and then we filter in part-time. Well, Jamie's part-time too, but during the busy times, we don't have everybody come and stay at the same time, because that's just a waste of, a waste of resources. You know, we have somebody come in at ten and then leave by two, and then somebody else come in later and then stay through the end of the day. So we don't, we try and keep up with the demand. It is, it is definitely busier than what I ever anticipated. Not gonna say anything different. I did, I really didn't think, and then this year probably will be dead, so there you go. You just, I mean, you just never know, but like I said, I mean, I had, I don't know, it was last September. Was when I was starting to get the first reservation request and just hold times for this upcoming spring and summer. It's busy. That's a good thing. Um, anyway, so with that, well, it was, and how we do it too, when we rent out for a tournament. Um, they are responsible for maintaining their own fields. We'll have the fields dragged for them, drug for them first thing, you know, and they can use our chalk. And the chalker, but we don't let them on the equipment, and they're, they have to have their own field staff throughout the day. We don't, we don't supply the field staff. We just maintain the parks, the restrooms, and the concession stand. Um. Let's see, where else? So that's kind of that. So that was a big actually added on both expenses and revenue. Um, other little increases we're gonna do, we don't, um, for the swim bus, we haven't raised. So just to refresh your memory, every, every summer, we take two weeks and we take kids to swimming lessons in Tipton. Um, we do charge a fee for that. It gets twenty for each child or thirty for a family. I've never wanted to raise that rate. I think it's really important that kids have access to go to swim, and it's sometimes it's hard for parents to take two weeks off or two weeks to make that happen. Uh, but we are gonna raise those rates just a little bit this year. Like I said, we've had them pretty stale for the past ten years, probably. We're gonna, this year also, um. Cut that, um, we're gonna start to try and increase revenues in other ways, like I think we're gonna host a fall fundraiser. The library and I are kind of planning something, I think, just to generate some funds, everything usually has been. Especially when we partner with the library, kind of more free programs, but if we can find that balance between a free and, and also some paid options. So we're looking at some different fundraiser options. Um, and then another area we cut back on was a little bit on the set aside. We had started to really bump up the vehicle set aside, because Parks and Rec did not have a vehicle, and that, that's a problem. Um, but we bought one of the, we bought Public Works truck last fiscal year. So we are pretty set now for quite a while, so we can decrease that fund. It's gonna be a while before we need something new. Any questions, anything else?
Um, capital improvements, what?
That was the trail around Veronica Park. So for, since we're holding off on that project, we had hoped to start it this year with a small section. If the case is that we're not going to do that, because it would be then a multi-year commitment. Um, we'd probably repurpose that and use it for some new, um, benches, uh, not benches. Uh, picnic tables at Veronica Park.
I have a question about the dog park.
Yes.
Where do those funds come from? Do they come from Park and Rec, or do they come from the animal side of it?
Good question. Um, so it was, it was designed that it was from Animal Control Commission, and then previous administrations. Said, no, it comes from Park and Rec. Um, so I think probably we budget or the mowing. And the maintenance, the, the weeds, and you know what I mean, the, around there, that is just under the mowing for parks. This year I did order some benches, they're sitting down at Public Works, to put in that shelter. That came under Park and Rec budget. So if, if I get requests, it's considered a park, I put it under Park and Rec, but there's really not a specific. Place that it was ever designed to be funded from.
Okay, so then that, then that brings the question of, then where does the money go that people pay to use the park?
That goes into the, and that goes to the general fund or the Animal Control Commission. They do that. So Animal Control Commission also, it's under budgets for doggy bags and licenses and things like that under the Animal Control Commission. So that goes under that budget. So none of those fees come under Park, come back to Park and Rec as well.
And I thought about restructuring that. I haven't done that. It's, it's a lot of changes.
Yeah.
But I.
That's jacked up the way that is.
I'm not disagreeing with you. But I do, like I said, the benches, and even when it was originally designed, we, some of the benches were donated and some were from Park and Rec. And then just a quick on the horizon, one thing that is not anywhere. I anticipate that at some point, we're gonna have to do some serious bridge work on the trail out by the mobile home village. If anybody's walked on that trail out there, that, that is an issue, and I anticipate that's gonna have to have some, some work done to it.
Nope.
No, yeah.
Nope, I got a bridge, and unless they go put that one in, then I ain't opening no other ones.
So, oh, sorry. So. Like all the hometown days, uh, and. This one's fast, ice rink and stuff like that. That all comes out of, well, I know we have a hometown day.
Yep.
Line item, I know that, but. It doesn't. Rides and stuff.
That comes from a separate fund, not, not from the parking.
Alright.
Even though I help coordinate and it, it still goes on.
A lot of your time goes into hometown days. That's, so that's coming out of the park budget.
My time is, yeah.
Yeah.
But I am, yeah, I am salaried, so.
Yeah, the more she works, the less prepared.
Yeah, I know.
Time to do that, then what else?
How salary works.
I didn't know if it came out of your budget or if it came out of your general budget.
There's small items that do from that, very small items, like when we do the activities at town hall, the craft activities, those sort of. You know what I mean, part of the event I budget for, or the Easter egg hunt, or, um, the for fall festival things.
But it's small.
But it's small. It's, it's not that they, that they bucks that, that does not come out of here.
I'll see if Heidi, if yours works, so I'll give you a call.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yay.
Yeah, I think Becky fixed it. Uh, she thought it was on my end, but it was, it was an unplugged cable, so. Yes, um, I just, uh, I'm gonna do the presentation for city hall, and includes a finance illegal as well. Um, overall, I would say that this department is pretty lean. Um, you know, we, we, the biggest expenses that are coming out of, um. This department, our wages and benefits, as you might have guessed, um, the annual audit expense that we have. Um, is, um, another big expense, um, and then we have the contract payments. Um, things like our Tyler subscription, which is our software that we use for accounts payable and receivable. Um, credit card merchant fees is also part of this, janitorial services, um, pest control. That sort of stuff fits under the contract payment line. Um, and then I would say that the conference, conferences and travel. Is, um, another big expense. Um, city hall doesn't really generate revenue. Per se, um, but what we do, do Leslie specially is great at fundraising. The biggest fundraising that we do is for Hoover Hometown Days, um, and so that is, like I said, not technically revenue per se. But we do, of course, bring in money, um, so I just wanted to highlight, highlight that, um. And it is not part of, you know, the presentation, um, so the. So the, um, better present, representation of salaries. Um, what that is, is that, um, when Adam and I were meeting with the different departments, we noticed that the percentages that were being used to pay for different salaries were not quite represented correctly. So what we were doing as we talked to the different, uh, directors, we were, you know, looking at what, how we could represent those and be more transparent. Um, so that is what that is. Establishing set aside account, for instance, uh, City Hall does not have right now a set aside account. And Adam talked about, um, doing one for City Hall. We talked about being two thousand dollars, but then in looking at the presentation, I think it was dropped down to about fifteen hundred dollars. So fifteen hundred to two thousand is what we're looking at. And this would pay for building maintenance. So let's say in, you know, a year or two, we need a roof or, you know, whatever comes, you know, paint, uh, carpet, that sort of stuff. This is what we wanna set aside so that we do have a savings to, to pay for those things. And it's not an emergency trying to figure out how to pay for it. Um, another, I guess, when we're talking about cuts for the next budget, um, Adam was kind enough to, um, say that, uh, one way we could cut is for his ICMA annual conference. That's about two thousand dollars per year. So he is not gonna do that next year, um, to save a little money there. Also, we are also thinking about taking over some duties that are contracted out. I don't wanna specifically say what those are, but then, um, you know, maybe Adam can talk about it more. Or he has maybe talked about it more with you individually as well. So there's some savings there. Like I said, one of the biggest expenses that we do have in City Hall is the auditor expenses. So this takes place once a year. Um, in the past, we have, um, budgeted fifteen thousand dollars. But last fiscal year, so twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we spent eighteen thousand six hundred and eleven dollars for audit. We only expect for this to go up because, um, the state is no longer, they sent us a letter a couple of months ago saying that they are no longer going to be able to conduct our audit. So now we're gonna have to hire a private firm, um, to do the, to do that audit. And I would assume, and maybe Adam can, um, you know, give me more information since he's used a private firm before to do the audit, but it's, it's more not less of what the state auditors charge us. So we budgeted that for eighteen thousand dollars for next fiscal year, um, hoping that it would, it's gonna be enough. And then the other big project that we have talked about, um, for next fiscal year, that is coming out of the clerk or the city, um, hall office is a handbook. So, um, our handbook right now is pretty piecemeal, um, and a little confusing. And so we want to go ahead and, um, hire, um, a firm to, to put one together. As I was told by Leslie, um, a few years ago, we had hired someone to put a handbook together for us, but it was never quite completed. So we wanna go ahead and take, um, that project to the next level. And that is going to, like I said, we're not sure how much it'll cost, but it, it will come out of this department. So I guess our goals for, um, as the City Hall and finance legal, um, our goals for next fiscal year um, is to establish the set aside for building maintenance or start one, um, continue to be lean. Because we really don't, you know, expense a lot of money out of, out of this department and then fundraise for Hoover Hometown Days as we have in the past.
Say that again, say that again. Say that again.
What part? I'm sorry.
Questions for Heidi?
I have a couple of comments. First of all, I'm glad that you guys are setting up a set aside for building maintenance. But I was kinda curious as to if we might not consider, uh, equipment set aside. So, you know, we've talked about before, we've been in positions where servers needed to be replaced or copiers needed to be replaced. Even though we leased some, I, I think there was always a chunk of money came out in the beginning. And that for some reason, eight thousand dollars seems to resonate in my brain. But, uh, just maybe if we're asking other departments to be more proactive in their budgeting, maybe that, that example should be set from, from the city office.
And Colton, that is a valid comment. I know that when I, this summer, I had a couple of, um, people from different copier companies stop by. And, um, they wanted to sell their, their wares, if you will. Um, one of them did state that, um, our copier was seven years old and that is pretty old for a copier. Um, we've been really lucky that it does work. I mean, we've no, I've never had issues, um, with, with it. But, um, I, like I said, um, in my previous positions and, and from, you know, what, uh, one of the vendors told me, we should really start thinking about, you know, getting a new copier because, I mean, it could, it could be great. You know, for a year or two, and then it could just shut down. So that is one thing, like I said, um, and I, I had that. I had brought it up with, with Adam as well during our budget discussions that a copier was something that we should be thinking about. There is the option of leasing or purchasing. You know, of course leasing is great because it's, it's a monthly fee, you know? We don't have to purchase it all at once. But you are also right that, you know, when we purchase it, uh, depending on what sort of bells and whistles we have, which our current copier is seven years ago was top of the line, um, it would be about seven to eight thousand dollars to replace it if we are thinking about purchasing it.
Matter of fact, I think the old one, they wanted us to renew a lease. Man, they gave us a buyout where we could buy the old one. And we said, buy it, we'll just kick it till it dies and then we'll But we ain't saving no money to buy another one. And then the other thing was, was I wanted to make sure that part of your employment agreement, it was that, that we would pay for you to go to conferences to better your education. And although we, uh, appreciate the gesture, if, you know, it's something you really wanna go to, it needs to be in the budget, that you shouldn't be taking those sacrifices.
So what's the fifteen hundred dollar set aside? What, what are our thoughts on that building or?
It's just the start, just whatever we need. It's just the start at this point to have something. Hopefully if next year's a little bit better, um, you know, we can figure out what to do. But I, I just think it's just, it just to set the precedent that we're gonna start saving.
You think we can do an auditor for eighteen thousand?
I can do it. They say they had to have any kind of education, right? This estate said they didn't wanna do it, so I'll do it.
When Heidi and I get a little bit more experience and we know what our auditors need in preparation, we'll eventually be able to lower that cost. You know, for our first one, we already spent maybe half that in Garner, but we had a previous auditor as our finance. Had everything prepped and ready to go. So hopefully we get one or two in.
You wanna come down to ours? All right, thank you.
I will jump into community and economic development.
So these are like the bigger items you're referring to, Jody, um, in terms of Hoover Hometown Days. And then a couple of other things. Uh, we've had some discussions. We kept it about the same dollar amount. But that does mean there's some sacrifices going on, uh, due to inflation. We, we did start a small phase out for Christmas decorations. They're super expensive, the ones that are hanging along the streetlights. They're super expensive. So to put down twenty-five hundred, three thousand a year, hopefully in five to ten years, we can purchase them all at once when they're on, on sale, that where they're, they're unison with each other. But just trying to set that standard of what are our future big expenses and that's, that's start trying to budget them. It does maintain city's commitment of Hoover Hometown Days, but, um, some expenses may be cut. So I, I'd like to try and get, as I referred to in our council meeting, I would like to try and raise twenty-five in hopes that we can do the thirty-two thousand dollar fireworks show. I say we let the voters decide how important those fireworks are, is how I see. Maybe you guys feel differently. And I'll get a little bit more from Leslie in terms of how many, you know, is that one minute less or thirty seconds less? But, um, we'll try and do a push. I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on that. I know that's, I know those have been controversial in the past. And then the Hoover Hometown Days events at Cubby Park was roughly about four thousand. Outside of fireworks, the bands, the Corville Center. I think it was a good try and if we had the money, we could push it harder, but we don't have the money. And in exchange for that, it's a possibility, the Hoover Foundation may pick those up and put them down closer to the park. No guarantees on that yet, but I have had those discussions with Jerry. What can we do to start working together a little bit better? And they just can't, they have ties in their donations that needs to be for, money needs to go down closer to their facilities. And same with Park Service. They can't promote events that are two miles away from the Park, Park Service jurisdiction. So, um, those are taken out of it. And then, um, depending on how things go, we've already paid for inflatables this year. But I'd like to at least prep for the option of having paid wristbands and what that looks like for next year. Not this year, but it would at least give us time to figure out the logistics. Go ahead.
I would say, I would go so far as to say if that's the direction you're going to move in, why wouldn't you do that this year? Because then that way you find out if it even is going to work or not. Or you'll know what your base is and what you're going to have for revenues and you know what you could spend the next year.
I can talk with National Park Service and our inflatable supply company on the logistics of that.
Wouldn't be allowed on the national park property.
See, and that's where
Anything on the street, we could do that, but not in park.
And you may know more, Melissa.
It changes the, it changes the permitting. So it could be allowed, um, it just changes the permit and what we pay for it. So we, years ago, used to be able to do carnage stuff like on Modern Street and on Second Street there. So we are able to do it. It's just another, just different.
Good point in fees. Maybe the fees aren't worth what we get in bracelets either.
And it's, and I don't know, we're using a different inflatable company this year. So I, I really don't know if Becky can maybe speak more on that. But if we're selling, if we need to sell wristbands, I'm, I need to say I'm not opposed to anything, I'm up for whatever. But it does increase our staff time, um, both for how many paid staff are working. So we have to have somebody financial on duty that can run back and forth. It is a, it is a different step. We've done it. Definitely can be done.
All volunteers sent to the booth and saw with friends for the weekend. All, all volunteer.
I've been advocating for this for two or three years. I'm still might have to have Heidi on hand to receive the cash. What? You just can't take it home.
That's why you would at least, either myself or Heidi would have. And I think, I don't think I can take the cash for separation of duties. I think it needs to be Heidi or Leslie. Since I have the authority of signing off checks, you don't wanna give me the money. And then I can tell them to write a check for something else. So there's always a, a different person who does something different. Cause it's happened in my, not when I was working there, but it happened in my previous town where there was a city deputy city clerk that was embezzling over a hundred and fifty thousand. So you just
That could be worked out. That hurdle could be worked out. Give any doctor putting in donation boxes. I know that, but I meant, there's other places we could put it. I think that'd be advantageous.
It's been chatted about in the committee.
Well, I honestly think it should be done because, you know, you're not gonna get a whole people my age, my generation mailing you a check for a donation.
You guys don't carry cash.
No. Well, yeah, a lot of I'd be more apt to walk down a donation box, drop in twenty dollars than I would be to write you a check and mail it to your, bring it to city office. You're missing a whole demographic.
I've had discussions with library and then parks and then here at City Hall in terms of revamping how we take donations. So I've had those discussions in terms of being able to do them online. My thought with, uh, the bracelets is, you know, with some of what you could do is incentivize it. Maybe it's five dollars if they come before the event and they can just come to City Hall and we can do it. And then if it's the day of, then maybe it's ten dollars instead of five. So it encourages people to come early and save on the volunteer and staff time. I just think there's a lot of logistics to cover, not that we can't six months. But there's just a lot of factors that go into it as well. I don't know if that's the direction you guys wanna go in. I just need to know if we're gonna do it this year, we need to start working now.
We have any idea in the past, I know we didn't have it played with last year, but in the past, how many, how many kids? Possible kids we had?
I would say at least It's a pretty big number. We could, I was just thinking of the years that we collected fees to, and charge admission with Margaret ticket sale. We could probably go back to those years to see what we generated. I mean, it's a hundred percent of, of having that put out.
My idea is that if it generates some income, even if we have extra expense and, and labor, that pays for that, it may be a little bit more than we're, we're headed, headed where we're at.
My idea would be to do this. There's gotta be a company. I know there's like Carneys and stuff where they come and they'll set up their rides. They don't charge you nothing. But then they set up the ticket booths, they charge for the tickets, the people use them, they keep the money and that's how they get paid for themselves. There's gotta be inflatable companies that do that too. So then why, why should we take any of the risk or any of the anything? We pay for some fireworks, put some porta potties out and then let the, let the celebration be the town celebration and they can make it whatever they want.
Well, when the fire department actually did it on their own, we actually looked at, um, doing it that way. You have to guarantee them, well, that's been many years ago. We had to guarantee them. We had to guarantee them a certain amount of money. That they would make, you know, in order to do that.
If they don't make it, you have to cover it. When I was a kid, I bought tickets and we did the rides when I was, Water Street was there. We're not gonna solve that problem tonight.
Think we can get them some information? Then at least maybe they can make a more well-formed decision February or something.
I think council might wanna think about it, so.
That other things in community development. I, I still have. All of our economic groups. Getting memberships. I still got the three thousand go on the main streets for Christmas past. Instead of ten thousand coming out of the general fund here, it's gonna come out of hotel motel, so it's how we're saving ten thousand. Then we've got, I've got fifty-five thousand budgeted for building incentive program, that's what we budgeted last year. We're at pace for fifty thousand, it could go up. Just cause of how many twin homes like myself that are in that area. Possible that fifty-five might not be enough, but I thought that was the most realistic. And I guess my. If you wanna address a little bit with, with Sedco, I'd like to do a year and see how things are going. And then maybe revisit, I don't know, you, I know that discussion's happened all the time, so I don't know where you're at, but. That's sixty-seven hundred, so that's on the table and I did kinda warn Rod it could be coming. I just feel, it'd be nice to. To see with the watchful eye the next year if it's, if it's in the best interest.
So I was for dropping that, which we did one or two years. If you agree to go to the meetings, you'll figure out, maybe you'll see. What the overhead is and all that, and what we're getting out of it. I thought we were, I went to all the meetings, twice a, every other month. I didn't think we got anything out of it, so.
Well, then, then we join ICAD and Sedco to attract businesses to our commercial park up here.
Sedco doesn't do that. ICAD maybe, but Sedco.
Well, stay with me on that, aren't we all full up there now?
I can. I can at least answer part of that through my conversations with Rod. Again, I only get. Only got one picture, I haven't been here the whole time. One of his awkwardness, he has run into when West Branch changed from Main Street to Community Development Group. He's felt less welcome to be proactive there, and so I wanna bring him and Jesse together. And see what we can do, because typically, yes, your Sedco, same thing. We did North Central Iowa, your county economic development group was into the bigger manufacturing, heavy commercial. Your chamber, Main Street did the inside city limits, your hotel, your downtown businesses.
So last discussion that we had with Rod, and I don't even know how many of you was here, I don't think, maybe none of you. We, he came in here and we had a big discussion on. On him bringing stuff in, and I'm a friend, I mean, I'm a friend of his, but. What he said was that they didn't. They couldn't, they couldn't get a Walmart distribution center to move here. Because we just didn't have the population to support that, so for him to go out and hunt up. Big, what we want, a big fish. Is never gonna happen, you know, the best he could hope for was to get would be some little massage shop or something, you know. Which is what, which is what we're getting, you know, and.
ICAD, Rod.
I do have Rod coming. February meeting, I do have Rod coming to present on what Sedco's doing. I think it's fair to ask him those questions. I think it's fair, I'll give him a heads up, but I think it's fair to ask questions and where he wants to come.
It's fair, he should give us a presentation of what he's done for us.
Yep, correct.
I guess what he does, what he's actually done for West Branch.
Yeah, that went great. No, I mean, Sedco that. That, uh, veterans rebate thing, they kinda did that. They started a grow locally shopping thing that everybody got a sticker from their windows, but. I don't know.
I'm not gonna say it.
We always, we always looked at it beforehand that we didn't necessarily know what they did for us, but we didn't leave them out there working. And if. You know, if, if a company came and approached them about a place they wanted to open up in Cedar County. You know, are they going, if we're not part of them, do, do we get a fair shake or is it gonna be tipped and grant and all those others that we don't even get to be considered?
Those companies will find us if we're. Findable. They'll find us.
I think you're both making good points, they will probably find us, but at the same time, they'll ask around, they'll ask other groups. How easy is West Branch to work with? And they very well could call Rod up. So you're making, you're probably making good points.
I mean, Altorfer picked us, nobody asked them to come here, we couldn't have made them not come, it's the end. You know, that, that's how bad they wanted to be.
I figured it was good too for Rod to come and talk to the council too, so I did tell him I think it was urgent to come sooner than later. So he, he's aware there's, there's questions, so. And maybe that gives you guys more time, maybe you guys need to ask him questions directly, and I certainly can give him a heads up on it.
Although.
Move in the garbage and recycling, trying to have that be at a surplus of zero, but as Colton mentioned, I don't, I don't have the authority, I have to ask you all for that, so. If we don't support that, then it would be minus sixteen thousand in our, in our overall budget. I maintain animal, animal control at three thousand, they don't, they usually don't spend that. So that's. About a dollar fifty per month. Give or take, you know, some margin of error, but. I didn't have enough money, I know we talked about nuisances in my interview, not enough money to really ramp up. If we're gonna do, not to say we won't do nuisance letters, but for me to go as hard as I did in Garner. You're gonna have to up, up your money, so just, we're probably another year or two behind being proactive. But doesn't mean there aren't a five or ten that I can be on top of, but for me to do the whole town's not, you know.
We don't need to do. We only have about five bad.
Couple on Main Street. Give you a short list.
So you only got about five or six, you all know what they are. Probably ask anybody.
More general fund, just miscellaneous, we do spend about. Forty-five thousand a year lighting the streets every year, so just thought I'd let, relay that, if there's a. Uh, no, that's assuming there's a twenty-five percent increase. We budgeted thirty-seven thousand, but we're on pace. To spend about forty thousand this year, so.
Have you ever done a?
It's gonna go up when we have more development.
Ever done a replacement lighting?
We don't do it.
They pay for all of them. I was told we pay twenty-five dollars per street light. Every new street light's twenty-five bucks. Their expenses should be going down, cause everyone that goes out.
I asked him about that, I asked somebody, well, maybe we should pay less.
No, sorry, that's all. That's what I was getting at. That's what I was getting at, I mean, they gotta be saving money by putting LEDs.
For last, I've got planning and zoning, I did just, just to see how we were doing with building fees, I did add. Planning and zoning's expenses plus our building inspector fees. And expecting what we're gonna get, I did a three-year average on what we should get in building permits. We're at a surplus of thirty thousand, which is good. That does concern me that we are subsidizing our general fund with building permit fees. I'd like to at some point phase that off and bring that into capital projects to capture. Unintended costs of growth, like a turn lane or, you know, trails or whatnot. That's gonna take a couple of years, we're already hitting it pretty hard this, this fiscal year. We did, and that's why we're doing, doing so well.
As a builder. The expenses to the city occurs on a building are not anywhere near what it costs.
I've got most of my direction, I'll, I'll let you guys ponder tonight, maybe sit on it, think of what things we could have done better, what things went well. And then Roger and I will reach out to you on what to do with the second section.
Anybody have anything else? Six to three.
I need a motion to adjourn, so. That's it. Jerry's second. All in favor, say aye.